Thanks, Ms. Kamson. Second?
Second.
Ms. Bassin?
Hold on one second. We're trying to get Mr. Clanton in. Hold on one second.
Oh, okay. Hold on one second.
Never mind. Yeah, we need to make sure that you're able to hear.
It's too late or too early.
So he said he can't hear anything.
And the public has to be able to hear.
So he said he can't hear anything.
Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, we hear you. But you can't hear us.
Can you hear us?
He hears us. I mean, he can't hear us.
He can't hear us?
I got you. You're unmuted. I'm gonna scroll up.
Where's the phone number?
Yeah.
Okay.
Rather that than called.
You can? Okay, you're good. Okay.
I've decided I want this whole side.
I set this up for us before he left, so.
Is that okay?
Okey dokey.
Let's spread out.
Back there somewhere.
Okay, he's able to hear us. I'm able to hear him.
All right.
Do you need help?
Ready, Dr. Martin?
We already got a motion and a second.
Wait a minute. So who made the motion to resolution?
Ms. Kamson made the motion, and Ms. Bassin seconded.
A resolution certifying executive meeting of the school board of the city of Norfolk in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, whereas the school board of the city of Norfolk has to convene a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2, Act 3712 of the Code of Virginia, requires a certification by the school board of the city of Norfolk, this such closed business meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be resolved that the school board of the city of Norfolk hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the executive meeting to which this certification resolution applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the executive meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board of the city of Norfolk. Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Kamson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Thank you everyone. That passes. And is there anything else you have to do with Mr. Clayton's participation at this point?
No.
No, he's in.
All right. All right. I call the work session for August 2nd, 2023 to order. First, we have our board development. Oh, I'm sorry. We need to vote to to accept the agenda as presented.
Move to approve the personnel report.
A second.
I'm jumping way ahead.
Second.
Thank you. It was the personnel report.
Okay. Bassin?
Aye.
Buffalo?
Aye.
Kamson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Okay. Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
And Martin?
Aye. Okay. Now can I get a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Move to approve the agenda as is presented on board docs.
I second. Mr. Jordan and Ms. Kamson.
Okay. Bassin?
Aye.
Bassin. Buffalo?
Aye.
Kamson?
Aye.
Clanton?
Aye.
Gabriel?
Aye.
Jordan?
Aye.
Martin?
Aye. Okay. So first up, we have our school board. We're looking at board development. We have our school board priorities and goals. And so I was thinking we could go through this and look at our our goals and see if we want to keep modifier chain or delete.
Do you have them up?
I don't.
What are you asking?
The goals.
Dr. Martin?
That's your.
I think you also might want to move the mic closer, a little bit closer to you.
Okay. So I have a lot in front of me. Because I
So do we have?
Have everything on here?
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
With your consent, I'd like to walk us through this, if you're okay.
Yes, go ahead. Please do.
So
Put you on the spot?
No, it's okay. It's all right.
I think that's a good idea. Okay.
So before we start looking at charts or anything, I think, at least from a board perspective, we would agree that over the last month, we've been trying to have conversations with one another about how we can be more effective and efficient with doing our work focused on student outcomes and our goals. And so we've had some conversations. We've gone through some recent work with Valbrun. We completed the superintendent's evaluation. And so I would just ask, as we go through this, that just as we may have had conversations on the phone, or at the Y, or at the library, wherever we may have had our conversation, kind of just focus and pretend like that's what's happening now, those same types of conversations, and just kind of zone out the fan and the microphones and everything else, and let's just have a conversation. So one of the last things that we discussed with the Valbrun group was around goals and priorities. Don't want to get caught up on the language, but you all may recall in June, we worked and we identified three potential priorities. And at that particular meeting, Ms. Bassin wasn't present. So what you have on the screen is an effort to try to capture those three priorities as well as conversations that we've had collectively and pulling from the existing strategic plan. So if you recall, we did an exercise with the Valbrun group. We ended up with three items that rose to the top. One was around third grade literacy. One was around, well, one was around third grade literacy for all students. One was around reading proficiency for Black students, and a third was around achievement gaps. But as we've talked over the years, we've always had a conversation around the importance of school accreditation. And then Ms. Bassin had raised, and she wasn't at the previous meeting, that of those three, you know, we really didn't have anything around, you know, graduation. What is it that our students would be able to know and do at the end of their time with us? So this is an effort to try to capture those three plus the two. As we've talked about our norms, one of the things we said we also wanted to achieve was to have our goals and priorities as SMART goals. And so what you see there are five potential priorities for us that hopefully today, we can have some further conversation as necessary and try to drive towards a consensus so that at the next meeting, we can adopt those. At this point, this is the board kind of having this. We obviously have to have the superintendent's feedback and recommendations on this. So ideally, in the time that we have allotted, we can look at these five goals and at least see as a board, are we comfortable to say to the superintendent as one voice, this is what we like to prioritize? And then provide the superintendent time to come back, in some cases maybe fill in some items, and then I'll come back and talk about later around what the superintendent then may come back to us on around interim measures of success that we should be looking at throughout the year as we work towards these long-term goals. So the goals are written in three- to five-year timeframes, and then the interim measures that Dr. Burssong would recommend to us would be more focused on annual. But then when we have board meetings and work sessions and we're kind of monitoring our progress, we would be looking to monitor that progress based upon those recommendations that Dr. Burssong has brought to us against these goals that the board said we want to prioritize. Does that, that make sense?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Well, the one piece of information that I think we also talked about, in addition to having the annual monitoring piece, is also being able to track our progress throughout the year.
Yes, that's what I was just saying, with the interim progress.
Okay, I thought I heard the annual piece, but I just wanted to be sure that we are tracking throughout the year.
So we'll scroll down a minute, but right now, there are, don't scroll down yet. I'll stay where we are. Okay, you're gonna help us stay focused now.
Okay.
So we've got the five goals. One deals with our drive towards achieving 100% accreditation over time. Second goal deals with third grade reading as measured by the reading SOL test. Second goal is around reading proficiency rate for Black students, also measured by the SOL test. The fourth one deals with how we want to give attention to reducing achievement gaps. And then the fourth one deals with the college and career civic readiness indicator that we've talked about quite some time and also is referenced in the strategic plan.
And I remember as we just spent a year doing these, so these are basically done. It's the only one I am a little bit, is the orange one on the end.
Right.
I can't
It's, I'm sorry. May not
That's the one that has to do with graduation and those kinds of things.
College, career, and civic readiness.
All right.
Right, which is also in the strategic plan. But if you notice on that particular one, it just has X's on it.
Yeah, because I don't know how, it's hard to track those.
Well, we're required, so.
But you don't get it till late.
Starting this past year.
It's hard to track them on the basis that you were talking about because, you know, they don't come out in a regular thing. In fact, we're into summer before we get everyone that's the new graduates that are coming in, those things. So that's going to have to be handled a little, I'm not anything against it.
Right.
I'm just saying, if we have the plan where we're doing the regular ongoing data each month and all that, which the first four are perfect, as far as I'm concerned. It's the last one that we have to remember that it's not going to be aligned in the way that it's written, and there's really no other way to write it.
Well, all of those are intended to address, you know, the end game. When we get down further, it's really Dr. Burssong will be sharing with us what she's recommending that we give attention to as, so for example, in this upcoming year, what measures we should be monitoring towards progress, towards the end game. So for example,
All of them.
If we've talked about that star reading data gives us an indicator of how our students would perform on the SOL test, so then we know throughout the year, we can monitor the star reading progress. And then at the end of the year, we would see whether or not, how we are progressing towards the end goal.
Yeah, I mean, I like it fine, and the first four are right on. The fifth one was just off with what we were doing with the rest because of the way it has to be. So I just wanted us to be aware of that.
I see Mr. Clanton.
Carlos's hands up. Mr. Clanton, go ahead.
Good. Thank you, Dr. Martin. I was just looking at the goal five, and then I think I answered myself when I looked at the indicator down there. So we would use the on-time graduation rate. That's how we would identify success, I guess. Is that what you're saying, Mr. Jordan on that table?
I'm just saying that we know what the end measure is and that Dr. Burssong, if we agree to these, then Dr. Burssong will come back to us and say, these are the things that we need to monitor and measure towards achieving that CCRI goal, just like we would do with all the others.
Exactly. Just a gentleman's, I'm not gonna do a lot of talking. I don't have an issue. I think that all of these goals at one point in time have come up in a conversation amongst the board, various different retreats and times. And I do agree that having something that demonstrates on-time graduation rate really speaks to a multitude of different things, overage for grade, reduction there, attendance, if the students are there and they're graduating on time and making sure that they're proficient. And if we're truly saying that we want students to be able to graduate, go to public schools not only with a diploma, but to have certifications and be college and career-ready, I think that that speaks to that. And it's also in the strategic plan. So I've read over these items here. Like I said, I'm not gonna do a lot of talking after this. I'm in support of what's presented. So I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Okay. Go ahead, Dr. Gabriel.
Yeah, I can support these goals because they are in alignment with what we discussed during our governance training. They are springboarded from the strategic plan. And just for others to know that while we're hyper-focused on these main goals from a board's perspective, that does not mean that sight is being lost of high achievement, high expectations, making sure that students who would not necessarily fall into these categories aren't getting the push and the services that they need. But clearly, from the data that has, we've been monitoring throughout the year, these are the areas of focus. So I would say, speaking with one voice, this would be a good start.
Does anyone disagree with these or have any kind of question about it? Go ahead, Dr. or Ms. Bassin.
So I appreciate this discussion, and I don't disagree with what is here. So I just wanted an opportunity to speak to a couple of them because while, in theory, I agree that we need to have focus and attention in each of these areas. The language around the achievement gap and the specific goal and the way it's written right now, goal number four, is, you know, I'm struggling with the way it's written currently. And I do think that we need to take a look at that. I think we need to have a goal certainly around achievement, closing achievement gaps. But how it's written and with the language, the way it's written, are we getting at what we hope to get at with that is where I have concern. And having seen that utilized in the way that we just did recently, I'm not certain that we are. So I want us to take a better look at the language in that goal. And for this exercise, you know, I didn't want to come in here with, you know, to get us to try to wordsmith and, because I think right now, the goal is to
Agree on the goal.
to really agree around, you know, are these concepts, you know, these things, what we agree on? And I do agree on that. The other piece that I'm, so that's one thing, is improved the language around goal number four, to really get at the heart of achievement, closing achievement gaps. The second piece is, we most certainly need to have strong goals, a priority goal around literacy. And we have that here with reading proficiency by the third grade. We have for every student, and then we also have for a subgroup of Black students, which is great. And, you know, you've heard me say over the years that I think we need to have intentional focus on the groups that we see through our data need that intentional focus. And that is certainly there with goal three. But the other group that we see, well, the two other groups that also, you know, are shining very strongly in terms of needing intentional focus are students with disabilities and our English language learners. And particularly, you know, I don't want to say particularly any one group over the other, but some, somehow, we need to whether through our goals or through perhaps constraints that we might set up down the line, but to have that intentional focus somehow come through where the subgroups are getting that intentional focus through our monitoring. And that may come through, through the closing the achievement gap, but to me, that's a different, a different question is being answered there versus tracking and monitoring with intentional focus for our students with disabilities and our English language learners. So that's just, I'm just speaking out loud of where I still have some reservation. That doesn't mean I don't agree with what's here. It's just that
This is what you're thinking.
This is what I'm thinking. Right. I'm thinking out loud with my colleagues, you know, as you've been listening to me over the last couple of years about some of these things. So that's just what I'm thinking.
Could I address that idea? Could I address your idea, what you were saying?
Yeah.
Because achievement gaps are huge. You know, I can tell you, oh.
Talk louder. Yeah.
The situation with achievement gaps are huge.
Right.
And so we need it here, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And it just looks like a little shift in which way you're looking at it is all we need to do to tighten it up. And I don't think, we weren't voting this month. That was gonna be for next month, right?
Yeah.
For hopefully in two weeks.
Yeah.
That's what I meant.
Oh, yeah, no, just to be clear.
Everyone knew that I really meant it that way. So that's, I think, that's, and I wouldn't be on board with this at all if we didn't have the achievement gap piece, because achievement gaps and getting rid of them, closing them down, is what will turn everything around, because you're hitting all the kids that need all the extra help.
Right.
And so we want to keep it, and wordsmithing again, like it was on the other one, is something that we'll now have a little bit of time to do so we're ready to go ahead and get the vote done in two weeks, so that we are, so that we're moving, because school's starting, and we don't want to have this stuff not already done before we start school.
Absolutely.
So, but I agree with you. That's so important. Of all the things on here, it's really the thing, closing those gaps is one of the things that make all the difference for the kids. So this is something we want to be on top of. So maybe that's something that she could work on rewording it.
Well, I, so I agree.
It can be an indicator.
Well, I was gonna say.
Or it could be some direction that, I mean,
Or the superintendent.
Although, I don't want to say that the interim goals lie with the superintendent. So, you know, that's for her and her team to
Well, I was gonna suggest, so I agree with you. I think that we can work on, make sure we're good with the wording on goal four.
Yeah.
And maybe process-wise, then today is the second. If there's any additional recommendations for changes, we can have that by the ninth, so that we can be prepared. And again, you know, Dr. Burssong may have some feedback for us as well.
Yeah.
The other thing I just want to say is, so remember, while we have these five-year, four, three-years, wherever the number is, length is on the goals, what we're actually going to be monitoring will be the interim success indicators that Dr. Burssong brings forward.
Right.
So she's obviously listening. She obviously has already shared with us data that has showed areas of impact. We already have a strategic plan. So whether it's in goal four or goal one, or any other goal that she and her team feels appropriate, they may recommend to us that we pay attention to students with disability or students in poverty or English learners.
And I think when you mention
And that becomes part of what we would give our attention.
Right, because when you say achievement gaps, we know we're looking at those. We know what our gaps are, and the kids that we have that need that help, whether they're in a big group, like African-American children, or whether they're in a little group, like foreign language, you know.
Yes, South students.
Either way, it's the, that's where the, that's where you go to cut it, is one of those. So I think, I'm excited about this.
I am too.
And here it is, almost ready to go.
Before the second time.
I just feel, I just feel better having expressed that, and so it's out there.
And it was very, yeah, and I liked to hear what you said.
So I just want to, you can't really see behind the opaque colors. You see, it's a little gray thing that's sticking out. Everything says draft. Okay? So the numbers
A lot of good work there, though.
The numbers need reviewing by the administration, the, where we are in the basic, all that stuff needs to be reviewed, because I was just trying to pick out what I had seen, but they have to make sure it's accurate. And then in the other areas where we were just talking about the interim measures, or we're calling them indicators of success, that's really where the superintendent will come back and tell us that based upon these goals, these are the indicators or measures that we should be monitoring and paying attention to, so that the indicators of success, if we achieve those, are most likely to me are going to be determinate, if you will, of the long-term goals over time that we've established. So it's the interim stuff we're really be paying attention until we get to the end of the year, and then we'll just see at the end of the year, how we are progressing against our three-to-five-year goals. And some adjustments may come about with the interims based upon what the superintendencies. We may, we may achieve everything that we need to achieve and then change focus, but that will be where she will be guiding us through that.
Right.
And then if you scroll, I don't think there's anything left.
No.
Okay. So that's kind of where, where that is. Dr. Burssong, you don't have to respond now, but is there anything that you want to say about at least the conversation that you have, that you hear us having?
So I will say that the goals identified are definitely very appropriate. We've talked about these things not only this year, but we've talked about them for several years. And having something in writing in July is a great accomplishment. And so I'm looking forward to kind of having more time to process it all. Again, this is Yes, I know, right. Okay, just kind of sprung on me. So, but again, overall, they're definitely overall appropriate goals.
And as of right now, you feel comfortable about us being on this schedule of what we have today and trying to, at least the big goals, solidifying them by the next meeting?
Yes, I was going to suggest that, like, if you were to do anything during the next meeting, it would be to adopt the goals and maybe not the interim measures, because I will need some more time with that. And as you know, we're trying to open schools within a couple of weeks, and for me, that is a priority, not that this isn't important, but we won't even be able to accomplish these things if we don't get schools opened and ready for kids, day one, on August the 28th, for the public that is listening. We're starting school Monday, August 28th.
No matter what.
Not after Labor Day. Make sure your children are in school on August 28th, Monday.
Do you feel comfortable with us having all of that together and adopted by the September business meeting?
I think that might be possible. And if I don't believe that it is, I will definitely let you know, but I think that would be possible.
But that gives us time to do this, adopt the second meeting in August, September work session, any further discussion we need to have around interim or anything, and then the September business meeting be good to go for the rest of the
So would you have to adopt the interim measures, since they're mine? I'm just
Not so much adopt them.
Question of process.
But helping you, you would just explain to us
Mm-hmm.
what those interim measures are.
Okay.
Because then, as you all are working in agenda planning, we then would have to lay out in that calendar
Mm-hmm.
which months we would be monitoring, which of those measures you have recommended.
And I think it definitely needs to be her, because she's an educational expert here when you get into all of that. And we all kind of together did the talk, because that's really what we've been talking about during the training.
But the goal here is just have it on two pages.
Yeah, I like that.
Anytime anybody wants to know, we know what they are. We don't have to dig through a volume of paper to figure it out.
Yeah.
All right, so the second item, I know time is ticking. The other thing that we've been talking about is, once we have these goals and have these measures, how can we as a board receive reports and presentations that allows us to understand what's happening? So I don't mean to insult anybody, kudos myself, but if Ms. Tanner, if you pull up one of the, I think there was a measure
Goal two?
Oh, okay, hold on a second.
One of the goals. Let's do
Achievement gaps.
Oh, okay, goal two, wherever it is, I can't, oh, okay, goal two.
Third grade reading SLO pass.
Goal two.
Goal two.
Okay. Again, this is all a draft, but let's say that we had the interim measure that Dr. Burson had worked on. We would know the goal that the interim measure would tie to and then what we would receive as part of a report would be Dr. Burson showing us what the data is telling us, what the data are telling us, giving us any background information on it. So let's say that we are, um, uh, that we think the, the progress is way ahead of the game. So she could color code something that says with the progress is way ahead of the game. She would give us background on what she thinks was working, why we're ahead of the game and so forth. If you keep scrolling, that's not it in this particular case. Uh, and then any other additional background information, uh, would go in these charts. So go up a little bit more. I'm sorry, down.
Yeah, what's going well.
So what's going, what's going well, what's not going well, and what are we going to do next steps? So it's just that kind of simplicity in terms of a report that we would receive. Then if we want to go deeper than that, you know, they always give us a lot more information we can go read on our own, but from a conversation that the board would have around monitoring, it would kind of be written, uh, at a third to sixth grade level so board members can understand it. And, uh, uh, and, and just kind of highlight it and just kind of highlight what are we doing well, what are we not doing well, uh, what are our next steps going to be if we are doing something with excellence? Maybe we, the recommendation may move on to something else. If we see we've found some challenges, then it would be spelled out for us what the administration is recommending will be the next steps. So that's what that's intended to kind of give us a way of looking at a, a, a monitoring progress report.
Mm-hmm.
And that would be something we would receive each month based upon whatever goal and whatever interim measure, um, we're, we're giving focus.
So is it, what you're saying is that these three things here will be what we get?
That, that report.
That report will be the report.
Each, each time we do, any, anytime we monitor any interim measure, we'll get a basic report similar to this, no subject to change.
And our superintendent will be the one that provides that information.
Provide that to us.
She's the educator.
That's correct.
Okay.
And then, and then we would just be able to have conversations and questions around those things that, that she has identified. So.
And we'll use the same model on all five.
Hopefully we'll be consistent for, for each time.
It has to be, it has to be the same model.
Has to be the same model.
For everyone, same colors, everything has to be consistent.
This particular format.
Yep.
So we're all on the same page.
Yeah, what works, what didn't.
And then real quickly, just, just for, just for time, uh, if you click on the sample charts, PowerPoint, uh, it's another document.
Which one?
Yeah.
This one here?
Yep.
Okay.
So I know you can't.
Did you do this?
I just, I just pulled from the data that they had, but I.
But did you make those charts?
I color coded it, yes. And so what, this could be a way that we would be able to look at some data. So even though it's blurry, what, what's intended to try to do is if you scroll down a little bit. Want to, so at the bottom, there's a little legend and it shows green, yellow, pink and red. And that was fine. You can stay on, pick one, pick one, don't move.
So just stay still.
Go, go to another one, go to the next one that's easier to read. Keep going, go one more.
Go up.
Go one, one more slide, one more slide.
The middle, the middle school is.
Let's go one more slide.
One more. There you go.
There we go.
So if you, if you scroll down just a little bit, scroll down where you see the legend on the.
The type of file this is is not letting me scroll.
Okay. Anyway, the intent is that we would be able to see in green what's on target. The yellow was if we, if a, uh, indicator was five percent away from the target, it would be yellow. If it was, uh, five to 10%, it would be, I'm sorry, yeah, it would be pink. And then if it was greater than 10, it would be red. So it's just a way of trying to color, there you go.
There you go.
It would just be a way of trying to color code so we could just see with ease how, how are we progressing towards whatever the goal may be? And then on the right-hand side is just a chart. We know that the.
Sorry about that.
Is a, there's a, there's a chart and, uh, there's a red line across the chart. That red line is just supposed to be the benchmark.
Yeah.
And then the others are just performances against the benchmark, but just another way for us to be able in a.
Digesting.
One slide to be able to digest it and, and be able to move on. So any.
Do we have someone that, I mean, we lost our, our graph guy. He, I mean, well, he retired, he didn't drop dead or anything, but.
Jesus.
But do we have, that's going to be, this is a lot of work.
Yes.
They have skills, absolutely.
And we need, and do we now have a person that, that wallows in this all the time?
Yes, we do.
If we don't, we will find a person.
Okay, because I think that's.
I feel confident that we.
Yeah, that way all of your people won't be running here and there to do it because there'd be one person who would be doing this job.
Ms. Campson, if I may, actually, I just pulled from, I just pulled from PowerPoints they already gave us and just put it all in one slide.
Yeah.
So nothing up there is really new.
Well, and, and I'm not disagreeing with that, but it's still, it's still a, a, a job load to sit down and get it together even if you go, because everyone has the charts and all.
Yeah.
Well, not everyone. We do because someone's made them, but, um, it, it's still got to be put together. You've got different levels, you know, elementary to middle to high school. So it's, it's going to be a time-consuming thing for someone and it shouldn't be a whole bunch of different people, just one, just take one person. It's just a suggestion.
Dr. Burson, go ahead.
So I would just add, it, I feel like we may be going into the direction of not having so many, you know, extra reports, like if we're going to focus on our focus, which I've been seeing.
That's exactly where we're going with this.
To our team, have I not been saying that?
That's the intent.
For the last couple of days, we're going to focus on the main thing.
Yes.
The main thing, the main thing. And so if this is going to be the main thing, then it will replace all of the other 50 other reports that we have to do every month.
Correct. And if any, and if anybody wants to dive into the 50 other reports, they can go on the website. You all have all those charts on the website. You all give us all kinds of background info. You know, anal Rodney can go look at that stuff all day long, but the board as a whole in a meeting, that's what we'll be paying attention to, what you helped drive forward.
Okay, so I have some, I have a thought about those 50 other charts. Um, I think this is very simple to understand. It, it captures the essence of, of what we're trying to get at. My only question to the board is as we talk about proficiency rates, we also have the high pass rates. Would it be possible for a chart like this, um, to have another bar line that has the high proficiency rate and right next to that, to these bars here have how our schools are doing with the high proficiency rate? Because I think that somewhere in our focus, we, we need to also not forget, not that we are, but also be mindful of those high proficiency rates. So if that is something that you all would be amenable towards while we're, you know, trying to kind of come together around these, these graphs, if that would be something to add on to this, that's my only request, then I would, I would like to do that. Anyone opposed? Okay.
Okay.
So just for time's sake, so we've, we've, you know, we had these different action items we were supposed to do as part of our norms. So, you know, we had four things that we've agreed to. We said we would work on, um, uh, SMART goals, so we just agreed to that. We said we would, uh, work on monitoring and spend more of our time on student outcomes. This process gets us, uh, gets us there and it gives us some focus, aligns with the strategic plan and anything else, you know, because I didn't pull this up, but if you go on the website, again, in the strategic plan section on the website, all those other tables that we've talked about, they have them all there.
Yep.
And so those things can get populated and we and anybody else can look at them and if at some point in time, something warrants for us to, you know, superintendent thinks there's something we need to give attention or if it's something we, we think gives attention, we can work, work through that. And then the other thing that we said we would work on is, um, how we set time aside at, for an agenda. So I would say maybe, uh, Dr. Martin, at the next meeting, if maybe we can just have a brief workshop to finish the other norms piece, then hopefully we would be done with all of our tasks and assignments. How soon do we get reports? Um, anything else around communication? I can't remember them all off the top of our, top of my head, but get those things done. So, uh, you know, we know school starts a week earlier this time, but come after Labor Day, we, we should be running. We don't have to deal with this stuff anymore. We can focus our attention on, on the work.
Mm-hmm. Looks good to me.
Uh, thank you and appreciate all the phone calls and meetings and discussions and I hope, uh, uh, we captured our thoughts here and, uh, and can turn it over to Dr. Burson and let her have an opportunity to digest it and come back with any additional thoughts that she may have. You don't necessarily have to wait till, um, the, the meeting, the, the next meeting if you have some thoughts, but we know, at least by the next meeting, we know that there may be some modifications, whether they come from Dr. Burson or recommendations from any of us around number four.
Will we get a copy of this so we can be looking at it before?
It's all, it's all on board docs.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And I, I think I emailed it also.
Oh, I see, yeah, okay. Email out that you just reorganized it.
I would also be open to if, if during our business meeting, if we finish our closed session early, if we want to pick up the norms discussion there, that would be, I would be definitely be open to having that discussion then if we can.
Because we're hoping to do a vote on it next, next.
On the, well, the goals, but we haven't gotten to the norms and the protocols.
I thought he was just talking.
Well, we adopted the norms and protocols, it's just some of the tasks associated we need to close.
Okay. So those two things are basically what we're, we're working on to make sure we're ready to go with the, on the 16th.
I was speaking to Mike.
Oh.
Sorry.
I, I'm, I'm always so.
Fan is running.
Yes.
So.
Can I just ask for, I have my personal privilege, college, can you talk into the mics? Some of y'all can't hear and I'm, I'm trying to hear you.
Who, are you not hearing?
Yeah, he's having a hard time. He texts and says he's having a hard time hearing everyone.
Real well.
Dr. Gabriel, can you repeat what you said, please?
Yeah, right here. Right here.
You want to stand up?
I got the gist of what you were saying. I'm just saying going forward, can everybody?
Okay.
Get to the mic.
How do you like that?
So it seems like, it sounds like that we have.
Move your mic closer to you.
Yeah, I thought I did.
No, like all the way up, thanks.
There you go.
Okay, enough messing around. So we have the product, the norms and the, and the priorities and then we have the norms and the.
Protocols.
Protocols. I don't even have to, I should know that. Anyway, so, so that is what we're working on to get ready for the, the vote on the 16th that we're trying to get everything into by the ninth. Is, am I understanding that correctly?
At the, at the business meeting, our goal is to adopt these goals that we just spoke about.
Right, and, and the norms and protocols also.
We've kind of already adopted the norms and protocols.
We did adopt them. Okay, I thought we were finished with them. I didn't.
But it's the tasks. The task that we're around is if we have some extra time because closed session might run earlier, I mean, um, we might be able to get through it earlier, then we can pick up where we left off.
Okay, so that by the end of the meeting on the 16th, we will be, everything will be set to go with the norms and protocol and with the, um, priorities and those two, those two things, okay.
Mm-hmm. But I, we don't have anything to vote on related to the tasks per se.
Right.
It's just that we're, we're completing that task.
We just all agree with it.
Right.
Okay, sounds good. That sounds good, thank you.
But the other, um, but what I think I heard is that we're asking for time at the workshop just to review the goals with any feedback that is received from now until then and to refine it and then.
And then we're set to go.
And then, yeah, and then put it on the docket for, for approval.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, I don't know if we did that within 30 minutes, but we probably were close, so.
It's still good, good.
Good job.
We'll, we'll turn it back over.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
So, so we'll take care of the norms and protocols, um, at our business meeting and then we will follow it up with the committee, use of committee assignments. Okay? All right, thank you, everyone. Thank you for your work on this, everyone who contributed. I really appreciate it. And I do want to say if there's anything that you guys are really passionate about that you want to take a piece of and, and be a leader on that, please let me know because I, I'm more than welcome. We all have so many talents here and interests that I'm more than welcome you all to take the lead on, on something like this. So, so thank you very much. Okay, up next we have our literacy plan. This is for discussion only. Um, and Dr. Paul's here to answer any questions you may have. Is there any, any comments you have before we have discussion without it being a big presentation?
I can stay away from a big presentation. I'm happy to stay away from a big presentation. Um, the comments are, you know, I, I do have, uh, Mr. Clark, our senior coordinator of secondary English and Ms. Nash, our, uh, senior coordinator of English Language Arts, uh, with, with us today. And also that the, the literacy plan, the implementation document that was posted really works in tandem with the website that was linked below that has all the resources by grade level band and it's outward facing for our community as well.
Any questions for Dr. Paul or comments? Go ahead, Ms. Bessine.
Well, I guess first is, is that the crux of, um, or do you have more to present as?
He's, he was not asked to make a presentation.
Okay, okay. I was just making sure.
That's why we were giving it ahead of time.
Just making sure before.
And then we can just have this time.
I could, I do have like a 25 slide presentation in my pocket, ready to go.
Get some tape for her mouth.
It is, it is.
I know you do.
It is right here if you'd like to see it.
Well, I couldn't tell if you were going to share, share any more background, uh, any more background about it.
And I'm also happy to, to, to just give a cursory glance to the document and the website if you'd like.
Okay, that'd be good.
Yeah, maybe the website, yeah.
Okay.
So, excuse me, I, I, Dr. Martin, I do think would be helpful to at least have understanding why are we doing this?
Well, that's what I had to get at.
What's the intent and what, what is the board's role in this and?
Right.
So we have a understanding of what we're doing.
That's perfectly fine. So traditionally in Norfolk Public Schools, we've had a literacy plan in place. When I joined the team in the school year 2021, which was a very tumultuous time, as we all know, we looked at our literacy plan and really started thinking about how do we go in the future with it? And we started redeveloping and rethinking, and I'm going to go kind of backwards on this, let me do this first. So originally when we started with the literacy plan, we started, this was when Ms. Collins was still with us, and we started developing an online portal and more of an oversight of a plan with supports and what we wanted to accomplish as a division connected to literacy, because we knew without a literacy plan, then we really don't have guidance for where we want to go with instructional practice and the importance of focusing on literacy. So then our focus was really on early literacy, which you're very aware of. We put together the PALS tutors program, we brought in the SIPs curriculum, and really focused on phonemic awareness and phonics and learning to read, because that's the baseline, and put a lot of resources in there. So when you look at our site overall, you'll see that has the mission, our purpose, we're keeping it loaded with some data, but we also will connect to the strategic plan and other data, and based on your conversation around your goals. Clearly, we'll keep data on here around reading on grade level, which we have pieces of data here, but also the one with our subgroup data and our gap data, we'll make sure that we upload that on here, because data transparency is just important. And then we link to the school quality profile, so you can get to every school's data easily from this one site. We talk about our commitment to literacy, our seven promises, and the phases of what we're doing. We also have linked here the action plan steps, which is the document that was uploaded. So this talks about how are we implementing it, how are we holding ourselves accountable to it, to the literacy plan, what goals are set, what interim measures are set throughout the year. We tried to tie this closely to the strategic plan, so that we are following that data. And again, based on conversations, data even on this document, we'll start breaking down demographically to meet the needs of what you guys are going to be following as well on your goals, pending their passing at the business meeting. And then you'll see each grade band, we have information around curriculum, we have information around instruction, assessments that we use, interventions that we have, and this is just our pre-K. And then when you start looking at grades K through two, and you start looking at the grade bands within K through 12, you'll see it goes even further. And they have here, let me just move that bad boy out of the way, you'll see we have links to curriculum, we have links to instruction, links to assessment and intervention, and parents can go right in and see, oh, well, what about curriculum in K two? And we can go in and it talks about our curriculum, it links to the Virginia standards, it talks about kindergarten literacy, first grade literacy, it has everything laid out, and that's all done by grade band. So all that information is out there for everybody to see and for teachers to have access to in one specific area. And this was, again, this was first introduced in the school year 2122, and this is our upgraded version now where we've accelerated even more. We've added to it now literacy across contents. So now we have specific areas within math, science, history, as well as all of our elective areas. And how do we integrate literacy in there? Because one of the things we just were privy to is we had Ms. Wexler, who is the author of the books you guys just received, spoke at our School Leadership Institute, and one of the high concentrated areas she talks about is content is so important. If we don't have understanding of a content, then we don't have understanding of literacy. And she shared data with us specifically around a student who was a poor reader based on a reading test, but had a high level of baseball information. When that student was given a reading assignment on baseball, outscored high-level readers that had no information, understanding of baseball. So that content is so important, so tying it to the content is equally as important. So the literacy across content is important. We also want to make sure that we're connected to the community. So what are we doing as far as community connections for literacy? How are we doing book access, community partnerships? What are we doing to celebrate literacy? Making sure this stays updated with community events. We've also partnered with our Communications and Community Engagement Division, so that we're looking at a monthly calendar of what are we sharing with our community focused around literacy? How can they support literacy across the division? And that calendar will be posted on here as well, once it's finalized. You'll see our 14.2 reading, where we talk about students who read 14.2 minutes additionally a day, learn what's the millions, a million words more in a year than if they don't read that 14.2 minutes. So really staying connected to that, and it's right in front of me on the screen, I should have just read it. But, you know, connecting to the Norfolk Public Libraries, the Rotary Club, all the connections that we have, and then we of course wanted to put Ms. Leunis Brown's email on here, because if you want to partner with us, that's a direct connection to become a partner. How do we do book access, our reach access? And then we talk more about the 14.2 initiative, and we talk specifically about the Virginia Literacy Act, which as you are well aware, goes into play during the 2425 school year. And one of the things is the VLA mandates having a literacy plan online, so Norfolk is well ahead of that, and has been ahead of that. But this really gave us more focus and helped us amp up what we're doing. What you'll notice within the VLA is it's very deeply connected to the science of reading. So it's more about neurological connections that are made to show how learn, how readers, how you learn to read that's different than what it's been in the past. So the science is showing, within the study of reading, that there are changes to be made, which is where we've made in the curriculum and where we've made with professional development. And through this year, we're focused on PD, connected to the science of reading, and connected to the VDOE, all of our reading specialists, they have to go through it, and then we do a train the trainer, so it goes to the school level as well. And that's all laid out as well in the professional development areas that are laid by grade band too. So let me go back. It's easier if I just move this down now. And let it load up one more time. So then, let me scroll back up on here. You'll see the way the accountability document that goes with it, you'll see it's very connected to the site. So we have the same, our mission, our purpose, our commitments, the seven commitments, and you saw our strategic and authentic and engaged commitments as well. And then you'll see through the whole literacy plan, this key talks about when I scroll down to the strategies, if they're developing, if they're building knowledge, if they're coaching, monitoring, or in their full implementation. And each grade level band has its own SMART goal attached to it. And then you'll see that we have our annual targets. We tried, again, modeled this off the strategic plan, and you'll go through and see, okay, curriculum-wise, what are our strategic actions? Where are we connected? Where are we pacing-wise with that? We know, you know, again, based off the strategic plan, making sure that we're in full implementation of everything by the close of the strategic plan, but all of these are going in place, and the goal is that they're in further than full implementation by then, but also reality of teacher turnover, of having long-term subs at the elementary level that we focus on a little bit more, to make sure that we really are honest with ourselves and not saying something that's in full implementation that is not in full implementation yet. Because if we say it is, then we're not going to look at that strategic action as much. So when we really built this, we've been very open and honest with where we are, and I'm going to make that just a little bigger for me. And then you'll, so we go down and we see all the strategic actions, and they're all broken down by grade band. And then you'll go through, and when you get to the K two, we also start talking about, okay, progress monitoring. So we know at the board level, we talk about STAR data, we talk about through assessment data, we talk about SOL data, but at the building level, we also are looking at Lexia progress checks, we're looking at PALS quick checks, we're looking at unit assessments, quarterly literacy assessments, we're looking at the PALS and VALS data, end-of-the-year data, and we're looking at the formative assessments. And you can see, monitoring-wise, we have monthly, weekly, monthly, every three to four weeks, each quarter, the PALS and VALS, that we have the fall, the mid-year, and the spring. Formative assessment, multiple times a week, where we're looking at this data, and those are expectations at the classroom level. And that is laid out for each and every grade band, and you'll see we break up the goal, so our strategic plan goal has 75% as the goal for passing SOL tests by the 2627 school year. But you'll see, we broke that down by grade level, so that we can look specifically. And then, like I said earlier, we'll break this down demographically as well, so that we know, you know, specific spots where we might need to work a little bit more diligently with. And that really breaks down how this was developed and why it was developed. And this will really give us focus on our professional development. And we did, over the past two days, actually it was on yesterday, had a session with all of our administrators around the literacy plan and the connections to the strategic plan, so they have an understanding and expectation of what it looks like as well.
Okay, we'll go around the room. Ms. Campson, go ahead.
So is this plan that it appears was created here, is it unique to Norfolk Public Schools?
Yes, this is our plan.
So this is our plan, okay. I can see that I'm going to have to get this on a computer and stop being a baby about it.
Go ahead, Ms. Buffalo.
But, yeah, so this is something, because when this popped up, all of a sudden, I was thinking it was aligned to the State Department and their literacy thing. And I'm like, oh, please.
So this is very aligned, though, to the requirements of the Virginia Literacy Act. However, this is our plan based off our data and our needs.
And it's extremely impressive.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. And really, the credit goes to Ms. Nash and Mr. Clark. They have done a tremendous amount of work on this.
Okay, Ms. Buffalo.
Dr. Paul, where could a parent find this exactly on the website?
So the, right now, we are going to have it linked to the English curriculum area. Been working with media and communications on this. We found out there's a little conflict with a Google site versus our website, so we're working with the web developers to redevelop it. But right now, I've asked that we can put the Google link on there, so that it is external-facing. Because previously, it's been an internal-facing document, but when we were meeting with the principals about it yesterday, they were very excited to have this external-facing, just because of the rich information that's laid out there.
Right, I was going to say, yeah.
So we will do that, and once it's out, we're going to blast it, like we've been working with media and communication as well, because there are so many supports for our families to provide to their children too.
Okay, because as when Rodney's reading all the data, I'll be in the literacy plan, so.
Who are they saying?
Right.
And I appreciate all the questions, I really do.
Very nice job.
I'll yield and go last, since I've spoken so much already.
Sure, okay. Thank you, Dr. Paul, and I appreciate the background that you provided, because I had the same, you know, thought and question of the purpose of the literacy plan, and more specifically, you know, my natural instinct was to think that it was directly, a direct response to the Virginia Literacy Act and what will be required next year. And I believe the school board is supposed to, I don't know if we're required to approve the literacy plan, but I know that the school board has to, it says, create, you know, develop a literacy, a literacy plan. So, you know, being the year ahead, I guess the planning year, that, you know, the timing of it is really good, not only for that act, to being compliant with the act, but based on our goals and what we know our students' needs are. So I really appreciate that. So my question is, so first, in the development of this plan, as we really strive to bring, you know, our stakeholder voices, especially teacher voice into this, can you speak a little bit about what sort of input went into the development of this plan?
So with the site development, reading specialist teachers, central office folks, with the development of this, input from coordinator specialist, reading specialist, and teachers, but not as deep yet as where we were. But however, all of these, all of this has been connected work to what we've been doing and what they've been a part of planning with. So I know, like, curriculum-wise, all the changes we've made, we've had over 50 teachers in this summer, just doing work with curriculum assessment with us, which is a big part of the plan as well.
Okay, so there may be an opportunity to get that voice as part of this.
Correct, and just like the strategic plan, this is not to collect dust.
Right, well, absolutely. And we don't want it to collect dust, obviously, because that's why we're making it such an intentional focus. So and to that end, so the strategic actions that are listed here, are each one of these strategic actions, you said aligned with the Virginia Literacy Act, but are they, I know that they also specifically have requirements, are they, are these?
Great question.
Specific requirements?
So when you go through the strategic actions, you'll see an asterisk on some of them.
Okay, great.
Those are required with the Virginia literacy plan. So, and now I'm scrolling, I can't see anybody.
Sorry if it's noted, I might have missed the notation if you had it.
Well, Ms. Bassin, I'm in full honesty, I saw asterisks, and I had to email the team, but I saw this then, they showed this.
Oh, okay, I was looking under the tables, so.
Yeah, so we're going to add that under the tables, because I had the same confusion when I read it, because I saw the asterisks, and I was like, I'm not sure what these are for, and then they pointed me to here. So we're going to look at how we can put this under each table and still have it, so it's not another 10-page long.
That would be helpful, because I was looking for that under the table.
We will take care of that.
And my last, let me see. Actually, that was, I think you covered the other areas already, so I'll let Dr. Gabriel go. Thank you very much.
And thank you very much for the report, for the plan. Some of the questions that I was going to ask have already been asked, and I would definitely say, however simple you can make it accessible to parents, even through the app, that would be very beneficial. And just a little feedback as a parent myself, so my kindergartner came home over the summer with a pack of books and workbooks to work on, and that was very helpful, because every day, we could set aside some time to read a passage and answer the questions. And I think that might be where you're going with the content and the question part of it, because that was very critical, because it's not just the reading aspect of it, but it's paying attention to the information in the passage and then making the leap to answering the questions, which is what they have to demonstrate on the SOLs. And so whatever you all can incorporate in your feedback sessions, I would say that enabling parents to have that easy material right in front of them, and then the questions right there, allows us to help to be active participants, because we know we all have to have all hands on deck for this. The other question that I have is, you had a portion of some of the slides discussing some of the added-on computer programs that are available, and I know with certain funding mechanisms, our grants that are going to be running out soon, we may not be able to have all of those computer programs. But can you just briefly identify some of the computer programs that you have for the elementary level? And then, do you envision the students being able to continue these programs over the summer?
So the main one in the elementary level is our Lexia Core 5. And right now, we're doing correlation studies with Lexia and with Edmentum, which is our math software. And we're doing correlation around not just, so in a few ways, around usage and success, and around each of the tools has a success measure for students, their success measure versus the success on the SOL testing. So if their, if their success measure says, oh, you know, this child increased by three grade levels, and then on the SOL test, they didn't even see growth, then we question, is it a viable software? Is it really what we think we need? And that's one of the reasons with middle school, we've actually pulled Lexia from the core classroom, and it's only going to be used in the support blocks as a tier-two intervention, because that instructional time is so much more important. Elementary school, it's great with small groups and some rotational model to be able to use some of that software, because it does identify deficiencies and work with students on it, but it does not replace the teacher, clearly. So the Lexia would be the one, and yes, they should have extension through the summer. And Mr. Brady and I have been working over the past year to look and see, okay, what specifically will we need to extend and what will it cost to extend, so that we'll know when this budget season comes in, of where those funds are coming from, and also looking at different areas of funding that we may not need anymore, and sunsetting some things that we may use that aren't as needed, if the correlation reports show out. Now that we have two years of data, it will have a stronger reporting access for that.
Okay, thank you.
My pleasure.
And thank you for bringing that up, because that was one of my questions, too, about the correlation, yeah, because I asked that last meeting.
Could I throw in real quick, perhaps for those of us who are not as computer, because she ignored it for the last few years, and maybe we could be provided with, if we chose to, individuals, because a lot of people here at WIZ is already doing this, to go through this program step by step with some training for school board members who would like to learn more about it? Is that something we could, maybe something that y'all could put together for anyone that was interested?
And we're happy to set up a two-by-two or one-on-one, or however the board would like it to be executed.
Okay, that would be very helpful to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
And Ms. Nash and Mr. Clark are going, yes. Yes, so we can certainly do that.
All right, Mr. Jordan, go ahead.
So, thank you, just some clarifying questions. So Dr. Paul, when you mentioned the demographic data, is that, are you saying that's something that will be on the internal-facing document, or something that's going to be added to this?
We'll add it to this. I mean, it's external-facing on the strategic plan, so we might as well break it down on this document as well.
So at whatever point in time we're supposed to bless it, that'll be there?
Sure.
Similarly, so at the school level, does each school then have their own literacy plan based upon this overarching framework?
If they don't, they will. But Dr. Kimson and I have talked about that, attaching it to the CSEP around a literacy plan because of the importance of it.
So the CSEP, as Ms. Campson and I were talking earlier, that's the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan.
Correct.
Because when I first saw it, I thought it was a response to that. But you're, so each of the schools that has a comprehensive school improvement plan?
Which should be every school.
Every school.
Okay, every school, all right? Which is on, every school should be on every school's website, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so. Okay, and so their literacy, SMART goals and outcomes and all that, should have linked back to?
Should connect to this, as well as the strategic plan, and I will be very frank on this, the message was very clear from our esteemed superintendent, Dr. Birdsong, at the opening of SLI on literacy and on.
By being the.
And on accountability.
CSEP Institute for the past day.
You're, this is public facing, yes, I appreciate that, yes.
So, Mr. Jordan, if they don't know, you'll know, because we'll have a discussion during the next personnel session about the people who aren't aware of our goal for next year.
All right, well, that's loud and clear. The, so, to the public facing, so it's a lot of jargon in here, so I don't know if it's dictionary, something that you attach to just kind of explain those things?
We can do it, we can do a glossary for it.
Consider that, and then the other thing is, so often, I will have conversations with parents, especially at the end of the year, and they'll ask, well, you know, why is my child, is my child being promoted, what does this mean, what does that mean? And I will often ask them, well, did you get a report, did you get a PALS report, or did you get a STAR reading report, or anything like that? And I don't think it's always clear. So, is it possible, in this document, to have something that, like, you identify certain assessments and so forth, is it possible to have some type of column or explanation to the parent that says, in September, when we say they were gonna be monitoring something, look for this, it actually show an example of what the, if it was a STAR reading report, what it looks like, so that as a parent is reading through this plan, if something says, Lexia progress check, I don't know if that's something that a parent sees, but if the parent sees it, what does it look like, and when should I be looking for it, so that they will have an understanding and awareness of what to look for, and what it looks like, and what to do based upon what they're seeing? How to communicate back with their teacher, or whatever it is that you all are recommending that they do, in order to try to achieve the outcome for the individual child, as well as overall?
So we also publish an assessment document every year that lays out what assessments happen each month, and what we can do is link this to that, and I'll make sure that that links to the sample sheets, because that has a, not only the date, when the assessments take place, but it has a column on it that explains what the assessment is and what the parent should get, so we'll make sure it's linked properly, so it's all connected. Mr. Jordan, I think that's a great idea.
Is that something that could be included in the student handbook?
It's already big enough.
The assessment?
I mean, I know it's already been, I know, but I'm just.
In the future, in the future, we can probably do a calendar, that book itself is around 25 pages, if you print it, because it's, we try to do it by grade level, and then we do it by month. So you can look, if you're a kindergarten parent, you can go through the kindergarten and see, what do I expect? But if you have multiple kids, you might wanna go, well, what's gonna happen in January? And it'll list all the stuff, and so we try to lay out a couple different ways, but.
Maybe link to the website of the school, then?
It should be linked to the website, we'll link it to the website of the school as well.
Maybe do it that way.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can make sure that happens.
Just one other point of clarity, so at some point, at the next meeting, are you asking us to bless this?
This was, this is just informational, there's no, there's no voting on it right now, there's no requirement to actually have it in place. We wanted to share with you, though, you know, I think I counted 1,324 times where you've said literacy yourself, Mr. Jordan.
Absolutely.
So we did wanna show you, it is a focus, it's a heavy focus of ours, and this work is ongoing, and our team, our teachers, our administrators, you know, this just helps keep it focused, and this helped connect it more to the strategic plan, so we just wanted to make you aware that we are aware, and we are very guided in our literacy.
I just remember, one other thing, so we were just talking in the earlier piece about the color coding, so like, on the chart that you have there, you know, whatever the target is, if it's some way to consider identifying?
If we made it, or if we're below, yeah, we can do like a same kind of, we'll try to match color schemes, so that we're not throwing a million things at our community.
Right.
We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, good discussion.
Thank you very much.
Up next, we have David Sturts from Cooperative Strategies, Educational Facilities Planning and Discussion. How are you today?
Good evening, doing well, how are you?
Good, you brought the cool weather.
It's nice.
Yes, it's very nice, thank you.
Brought the cool weather, and you have the sun, so that works for me. Good evening, Dr. Martin, members of the board, Dr. Birdsong, great to be with you, as always. It's also, I'm grateful that you started with the presentation that you did, because that is a perfect dovetail into what this study is about, and it's great to be before you and actually speaking about the same topics as those speakers previous, and not just saying, let's do an about-face and talk about something completely different. So, that's nice. And so what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna blitz through the context in the first part of this slide, which is the introduction that you saw previous in March, and this is sort of setting the context of when we look forward to future change, what I'm labeling portfolio, which we'll define specifically in the presentation. What can we look back to, to have confidence in where your students have had the most success in the measures that we're focusing on, academically, behaviorally, and otherwise, that we can then say, well, what portfolio factors do we need to plan for and maximize for in our update to the next master plan, the update to the master plan, so that we can have the highest confidence that the buildings and the arrangement of your capacity is supporting the kinds of goals that you were talking about earlier in this meeting. And so this is, what is gonna be different about the deliverable that we're gonna give you in later this fall, is it's gonna be very academic-based around these outcomes as it pertains to your buildings and your portfolio, with the follow-on being, from that, those outcomes that will present at the end of this calendar year, that we come with setting up a plan to engage with your community about the impacts and implications of those outcomes on the portfolio and in your master plan. So that's the broader context, and I'll scroll through here. There we go, okay, so, slide one, I already did. So, moving forward, so nobody, this is not new information for you all, we are in a population decline in Norfolk, and that is being mirrored in the school district, despite having a fairly robust growth, that growth in building permits is not translated to growth in people, and that concentration is, that averages about 500 students a loss per year, although that's not been even over time. You've seen this slide here, and this shows the implications of, historically and then projected forward, of your capacity overall, the enrollment overall, the dotted line being the average utilization by school boundary, using the historical enrollment studies that our firm has produced, and using the current projection that was made. We interviewed last time on sort of what some of the budgetary implications can be that we can look to consider in a coming master plan update, where we identified the average annual operating cost for each grade level, applied that back over, and just as a recap, what I did is just look at, if we were able to maintain an 85% utilization per grade level historically, and then use those annual operating costs, what might we infer could be some savings that could be plowed back into your student body that presented that model, and tried to be conservative in this approach, where we looked at saying, you know, if you have 80% utilization at a grade level, and there's, say, 300 extra seats, but your average elementary school is nearly 450 extra seats, we don't consider that surplus, because that surplus number does not equal the average enrollment of your average school, so that's not surplus, yet, once it exceeds that amount. So that was the mathematical model, and this should be understood as a, what we call in the business, a rough order of magnitude, this is to give an idea about some scale that might be present, that we could look to consider, and is there an opportunity to have, invest more per capita in our kids with our build, the way that we plan our buildings? So, the future operational costs use the same approach and apply that to your projections, and said, look, there could be up to a little over a dozen surplus schools by 2031, given the current trajectory of your enrollment, and how we actually would plan for that in terms of a master plan, is why I wanted to do this study with you, with our statistician that we're onboarding, we've on-boarded to do this, to make sure that any decisions that are made are not made from a decent mindset, you know, this school's too small, so therefore it needs to go. Rather, this is the portfolio that provides the best, most consistent outcomes for our kids across all subgroups, and therefore, that is the portfolio that we will plan for, and to get to that portfolio, here are the changes that will need to take place, here's the path, and we engage your population, your citizens, around that plan, to achieve the best outcomes for our kids, not just work from, oh, it's too small, so therefore we can't, approach. So, positive is approach, rather than a negative's approach. And that is really gonna help us determine what's the right answer to this question on maintaining the current portfolio as it is in configurations, or making some amendments to that over time. That's the look back on the March presentation, the look forward, where I would spend more of the time here today, is our study, which will look at determining factors that correlate to the desired student outcomes. First of all, again, I think I've mentioned to you all, thy mother is an English teacher, so define thy terms, if we're talking about a portfolio, what is it? A portfolio is an arrangement of schools relative to the student population, this is the counts of schools and the configurations of those schools. So we look at the configurations, the enrollments per configuration, and the number of schools, quantities within all. And then, we're gonna look at what are school-level variables that we are gonna study over time to see what corresponds to, correlates with, the kind of outcomes that we are looking for. So, support FTEs, to spell that out, that is full-time equivalent, these are support staff, we're looking at the data that you have on the number of support staff, supporting your teachers, far and away, the most important thing a school district does is provide a high-quality teacher in the room, highly effective teacher in the room. Around that teacher, a teacher who has the supports, we're looking at what kind of support personnel are around that teacher to also support the student's intervention and instruction. We'll look at school diversity over time, both in terms of SES and ethnicity, school enrollment changes, and physical building conditions. So we're going to be doing correlation tests between these factors, given the data that we have, and outcomes like SOL scores and other things, which I'll show in later slide. So, portfolio change, what data do we have on portfolio change? So here is a stacked bar graph that shows in miniature your portfolio change since 2006. The height of the bar shows the number of campuses, so you went from 49 to 43 between 2006 and 2022, 2020, this is past school year. The blue is your elementary schools, the orange are your combination elementary-middles, these are either PK8s, K8s, or 38s, your gray are your middle schools, and the gold-yellow at the top are your high schools. And so you can see the shift over time, those combo schools went from two to five, and then we're gonna add one more next year with Ruffner's conversion, take away one from the elementary, add one to the combo with the Ruffner conversion, I'm sorry, middle, not elementary, middle, so it goes from six to five next year, gray bar to orange bar, six, five to six. I stumbled, but I think you caught me. So, the, what's interesting is that the total number of schools that served elementary kids in 2006 was 34, between the combo and the elementary schools. The total number of schools that service elementary kids in 2022 is 32, just two schools less. What's happened is, as the enrollments have shrank, the combo schools have sort of been taking over in the elementary and middle, your net number of campuses has decreased slightly, 34 to 32, because you're just expanding out those configurations in the middle. Your middle schools, the number of schools serving middle grades kids was 11, the nine plus the two, in 2006, and it's 11 today. And so, that has, whereas the exact balance has changed, the total number of schools serving those middle grades kids has remained constant, right, 'cause you went from nine middle schools and two combos to six middle schools and five combos, right? So, on the net, you've gone from these 49 to 43 campuses, but you've really consolidated two educational units at the elementary level, because other than that, you've expanded other units to fill the difference. So what we have is, we have these changes over time, which we have thanks to VDOE's pretty outstanding data records that they have. We can go back in time and track some of these student outcomes as it relates to the specific school configurations at their enrollment with the building conditions, 'cause we have all of that data longitudinally. And so to that effect, to make sure that we do this in the most robust way, we've actually retained a statistician who has 35 years working in public ed, he's retired, is an assistant superintendent of, in charge of data, for a district I've done a lot of work with, and about 58, 60,000 students. He's now a professor of statistics, and he does some work with us on the side, so he's gonna be taking the data with us, we're gonna be setting it up, and he's gonna be putting the statistical heft behind it, he's gonna come and present with me when we do the results, so that you can, when you ask questions that would stump me, he can answer them about the statistics. So just to give a couple more slides on a picture of that portfolio change and what we're gonna be looking at, this is not intended to be read in detail, but it gives you just a snapshot of what's gonna come in the coming graphs, looking at elementary, middle, mixed, the combo schools and the high schools over time from '06, '14, and 2022. The notes underneath each indicate, you know, some changes, TWP, Tidewater Park, scheduled to close in the following school year, moving from 27 to 26 elementary schools, and the middle grades, talking about the changes in middle grades from the different programs there over time, which I don't need to read all of them, but you can just kind of track through where the schools have changed.
And that's enrollment in the columns, 2006, 2014, 2022?
That is correct, that is enrollment by school, by grade over those times. And what you can see, like, you can see the, not just the change in the configuration, but we're also looking at the change in enrollment per school over time. And so this is the elementary portfolio over time, the black bar is the enrollment at your elementary schools, the orange, and this is consistent throughout the following four pages, orange are schools with less than 350 enrollment, gold are between 350 and 500, gray are 500 to 749, purple 750 to 999, and blue is 1,000 or higher. And so you can see on your elementary, as the elementary enrollment has declined, making its biggest dip following the 2014 school year, the percent of schools that are in the smaller category has increased. And so we, and we're gonna be looking at all of the data over time, that we'll go over in a few slides, we'll look at by year, at these enrollment bands, and see where have students tended to do better. What excited me about your first presentation was, as I was texting my partner, who downloaded the information from Board Docs, is that we could look in arrears, like, just say, okay, if you're gonna try to make these goals by 2028, where have you in the past made the rate of growth needed to achieve that goal by 2028, in what circumstances, at what schools? And. In what circumstances, at what schools? And what can we learn from those circumstances that we can then apply to your portfolio planning moving forward, if, you know, if we can find correlations there? So big picture here, you know, you went from less than three, nine, less than 10% of your schools being below 350 in '06 to 30% in 2022. You can see that distribution swayed from 60% being between the 500 and 750 mark to only 30%. So you, schools on the distribution shifted smaller and losing about that one, about one elementary school worth of enrollment loss per year since 2014. That's when you've had the big dip at the elementary level. Middle schools, also you see the enrollment decline at middle schools, and you can see a similar distribution shift, as well as you can see that the total numbers go down. We'll wait till the next slide, because that's the combo schools. So you can see in 2006, over three-fourths of your middle schools were above 750 enrollment. By 2022, only 33% were. And, and the opposite of the distribution was similar. You only had 11% of your schools that were below 500. Now it's 34%. So everything's kind of shifting smaller. That, that portfolio as a whole, you're maintaining that portfolio, the enrollments have gotten smaller, and the distributions have changed. Here's your combo schools, those have increased. And this has been the response to the declining enrollment, which we saw in one of the previous graphs. You can see those schools take off in, as, as the elementary and middle were declining, you switched and made several of those schools combo schools. And you can see those actually kind of peaked in terms of students per school, which is a measure of enrollment per instructional unit in 2014, and they've started to decline since then by 2022. High schools. This is where you've had the pretty consistent, nothing, nothing changed here, except the enrollment's getting smaller a little bit. And so you can see that the students per school starts out at 1809 and is now below 1,500. And that is where one school, BTW, is Booker T is below, below 1,000 there. Okay. So that's, so yearly over time, we can look at your schools as they've changed size, as they've changed configurations, as the building conditions have changed over time. And we can look at what the, the data that helps to define what outcomes we want to look at as each of those variables have changed over time. Obviously, SOL, annual passing rates, math and reading, that's a big one. Right? So we're looking at that. Attendance data, your live-in versus actual attendance data, which is a indicator of attraction, where people are attracted to and where people are leaving from. You have discipline, crime, and violence reports, those changed drastically following the 2020, 21 school year. And so it's not, it's an apples-to-apples comparison with the later data, but we do have historic data before that from the, from the DCV, the discipline, crime, and violence reports. And so that has some data on sort of that climate culture element that we can track. Teacher retention and certifications, and higher-level classes, particularly for our, for our middles and highs. To look at the prevalence of those higher-level classes, which we're defining as AP, dual credit, and honors. So these are what we want to see. We want to see rates of passing rates. We want to see attendance rates, DCV rates, live-in versus opt-out rates, teacher retention certification rates, rates of higher-level classes, and see to what degree do those, do those things correlate with our building conditions, with our school enrollment, with our diversity, and with sort of the sports, sports staff wrapping around the teacher over time in your portfolio? And to test those with our confidence levels with our statist, our statistician, so we can have confidence ourselves in what to do with it, in terms of applying that to your master plan. So here is our timeline. We are data gathering, we started data gathering in July. We are building the models this month, running some of the, the models and tests in September, working with your leadership along the way. And in October, we anticipate having some preliminary findings and coming to you between November and December with the final report and the final outcomes of this study. And again, just to repeat what was said in the beginning, the key reason for this study is to inform recommendations for the future portfolio based on what environments here in Norfolk have had the strongest correlation to the kind of outcomes that you're looking for. So with that, happy to entertain questions.
Thank you. Questions? Dr. Gabriel?
I appreciate the, the holistic approach that you all are taking in working with us to provide these recommendations, because clearly we need to do some resizing of our district for cost. But the ultimate reason is to make sure that everything that we do ends in beneficial student outcomes. As you're data gathering and looking at the building facilities and you're thinking of recommendations, can you also play, pay close attention to the physical space of the building? And what I'm specifically thinking of is playground, gym, tennis courts, gymnasium, the things that are very important for our students, not necessarily directly tied to academics, but yes, it is tied to academics. So if there are recommendations that are made, do these buildings have equitable facilities, functional playgrounds, tennis courts? Or if we were to have a proposal, do we need to invest in anything for those types of physical and athletic needs?
Absolutely. In my language, that's educational adequacy. And so what we, we do have that data. And so what we can do is look at, yeah, we can look at where you have some of these key factors, playgrounds at elementary schools, and library space, STEM space, science space, art space, those kinds of things, you know, the, the, everything except your traditional classroom, you know, that, that you need. Okay?
For example, only we have one high school with a fully competition-ready track. So, you know, I think that would be something that would be important for us to at least understand as we're, as proposals are being made for either school reconfiguration, realignment, all of that.
Okay.
Mr. Clanton, do you have a question? Okay, you can go ahead, Ms. Basine.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation again. I, I really enjoy, enjoy these discussions and especially when, especially today's where we're talking more specifically around the academic outcomes piece and what, how we're going to move the needle for kids in our district. With that being said, so one of the things I feel that I often, one of my first questions usually typically when, when you're here is connect me from the last presentation to this one, right? And so where, where, not just in the slides, but in, more so with what we were, what we were asked to provide you with, and then, I guess, what, what occurs in the time between that presentation and where we are today, which, you know, I'm glad to see a lot of that discussion represented here. But one of the pieces that we talked about, you had presented four options that it seemed like, yeah, four, four options that you seem like you were trying to get the board to, to kind of think about.
That's correct.
You know, what direction we wanted to go in in terms of the portfolio? Do we want to keep it where we are?
Right.
Do we? And, and there were certain aspects of it. And I guess, do you have that direction is number one? One of my questions for you right now is, do you have that, or is that part of your data gathering that you're engaging in right now?
Fair question. Absolutely. And so you're right, in March, to, to, just to clarify the, your question, in March, I, I asked the board, tell me what you want me to do.
Right.
Because in broadly speaking, we're either maintaining our buildings, we're trying to look at, how can we invest the most possible perk student per capita, right? And those two things can be in opposition in declining enrollment, once you get, reach certain thresholds. And the point of the previous slides was to, to illustrate that I think we're there, where we need to make, as a district, I think that you're there, to make some strategic decisions about adjusting the portfolio to best serve your current population. What, following that discussion with you and the board, work with the district, to come back and have, rather than ask you that question in a vacuum, give you hard data with which to inform your decision-making around that answer. And so the intent of this study is to come back and to provide you with confident, data that you can be confident in to help you make the decision about how now should we change in terms of the arrangement of our, of our portfolio? So, fair question. The intent now is that when I come back in, in the fall with that presentation, with this outcome, we can have discussions about, generally speaking, the direction that you want to go with the portfolio change, given that data. And then I already have in the can, ready, a community engagement strategy that's pretty robust, that would take quite a bit of time. But if you were indeed looking at a portfolio change of magnitude, it would take engagement of magnitude.
Of course.
To get there. And so those are kind of in hold pattern, and we'll wait to see the results. I'll wait to see what your, your direction is, and we will craft an engagement and planning strategy accordingly.
And then, if I, if I may add, so I have a couple of questions connected to that. So, so I appreciate that. So as part of those options, so what I, what I don't see here any longer is, is a piece about the start times. So has that been, I mean, that's one, that, that's one thing, because that is a big factor in terms of, you know, academic performance.
Yeah.
You know, all of, all of those many areas. And so while it was initially raised many years ago as a bonus in transportation and in other areas, as far as ed planning, for, for us as a board, it was a lot more than that.
Oh, yeah.
So that was part of that previous presentation. I don't, you know, if, if those are A, B, and C, and D are to represent the options that were included in March, where does that fit in, in terms of, because that is correlated with desired positive student outcomes?
You know, I think...
And if you need to think about that, too, that's...
I may need a little thinking on that. But I can tell you that I recall, you know, giving the recommendations we had at the time on that process and that, yeah, you know, the, the outcomes backed up, the start time change, and our biggest hang-up at the time was, was it three and a half pre-COVID million dollars in some athletic upgrades, which now I'm sure cost quite a bit more. And we, because it's outcomes-focused, as you're saying, like, what, how could that fit in here? Because we don't have, we can't test change in start times within Norfolk over time, because we don't even have it. That, however, could be an appendix, an appended to the study as an additional consideration, given its relevance. So I don't see why not.
Okay. And then final question is, you had a slide up there on source to define outcomes, the sources to define outcomes. And that was slide 18. You had, you know, the SOL, yeah, that slide. And so some of these, so, so tell me how this would play in in your analysis. So some of these factors, not just in Norfolk, but in many districts, we have schools, you know, it's an equity issue, and frankly, a system issue, right? Something that we, like, as a board, take ownership of, not necessarily, so that, so I guess what I'm saying is that if we are going to say that we want to produce a particular outcome, positive outcomes, it's up to us to say that we are going to have equitable, in terms of higher-level classes, that we're going to provide these things. So I guess, and maybe I'm getting, I guess I'm trying to understand how in the analysis that that is.
Sure.
Going to be factored in when, when that, to me, is more of a system, is a front-end issue versus...
Well, let me, let me give an example for a case study of a district which shall remain unnamed.
Ask about an example.
That we worked with, a bit larger than you. And when we looked at their schools with the same statistician, we were looking at passage rates for their state assessments by every student subgroup, by every configuration. This district has a number of configurations, so we kind of settled down to like-to-like comparisons. And one of the things that we wanted to define was schools that were, at the high school level, they had all of the, all of the, the majority of the upper-level courses that the entire district offered were offered at these schools, that they obviously met all the graduation requirements. At the elementary schools, which elementary schools had, I forget the cutoff point, but the vast majority of the diversity of course offerings that the district offered, right? So where do they fall in the bell curve of course offerings amongst all the schools within that grade level? And the really small ones didn't have all the course offerings, they couldn't, they couldn't operate them.
Right.
Right? And so that, those schools were, were in a, in a bucket, the schools that couldn't offer these programs, the schools that could. And we looked at by grade span, by enrollment size, passage rates for every student subgroup across the entire district, and found where there was, there were cut points where at certain enrollment, like, every student subgroup did better at certain enrollment cut points than, than, than others. Right? The absolute numbers changed, but everybody's rate increased. And so that's the kind of thing that we want to look at here, is what fact, and then, and then also looked at what relationship did, did building conditions have or have, didn't have with those scores? And so that, that, that's what we're tending to do here, is to break it all down to the individual school level by the individual student subgroup, by all of these different statistics, and see, are you, where, are you able to offer higher-level courses regardless of enrollment, regardless of condition, regardless of capacity? Or are there correlations between some of those factors and the, the capacity to offer these? That kind of thing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Mr. Clanton, please go ahead.
Thank you, Dr. Martin. Just have a quick question. So with the study and the outcomes and what you're going to be moving forward in your next phases, is there going to be any information that will aid the board in the potential of having a discussion around choice? And when I say choice, I'm talking about, I know that you talk a lot about, of attendance boundaries and so forth, but one thing that I've really been pushing is about creating a choice option, particularly at the high school level. But, well, so essentially, my question is, with the information that we're going to get from you at this point, I guess, November, December, is it going to provide us a level of information that, that the board could be able to look at that and be able to ascertain whether or not that could be an option, working with the administration to move forward with their educational planning? and be able to ascertain whether or not that could be an option, working with the administration, to move forward with their educational planning?
Good question. Directly, we are not looking at comparing choice versus non-choice programs, per se. But because we are going to look at every school over time and consider these different factors, which include opt-in, opt-out, enrollment and the like, and passage rates, you, you will have data on when you have made conversions from boundary to choice schools, what have the impacts been? And so that, that's data that you, that's what we will find, that's what we'll use. We'll see that data, and then that could be extrapolated to inform your future choice. But I don't know if that addresses your question, because you haven't had, for example, high schools, you haven't had that phenomenon, so we couldn't study that phenomenon. Did I, did I answer your question, or is there something more that we could look at?
No, you you gave me a piece there, but it just goes into my other piece that I've, I mean, I've had conversations with my colleagues, but really pressing this about we'd have that big picture discussion. I know we're getting this report here today, but what do we, really want to identify what Norfolk Public Schools looks like for the future and what education looks like in Norfolk Public Schools? I mean, I was looking at your slide here, and I guess it was 1920 when we looked at capacity and students were here. Yeah, between 19, 2019, 2020, and there was almost a, I guess, almost a 14% kind of like drop in our attendance, maybe 14, 18. But there was a large, it went from 82 to 76% that one year. And I mean, of course, I know we were moving into, and everything at that particular point for us was either a point off, or, you know, I think one year may had two. But that one year, we had this large drop. And I know that we're trying to, just as much as we're trying to, no more, I guess, of the day, students just have choices, parents have choices. And so one of my other things is trying to make Norfolk Public Schools attractive in a way that not only that we offer great offerings, but we're able to market that out there and make it in a way that is appealing to folks. And so I know we've been to have this larger conversation. Choice is one of those things, I think, gone of the days, like, I lived in Park Place, Lambert Point, so I went to Moore High School. But if I want to move to a, you know, have a particular program that I want to be a part of, being able to create that opportunity and what that looks like district wide, I just feel like based on some things that I've looked at at other divisions, that it will help us with so many other things, with retention, on time graduation rate, higher certifications and so forth coming out of there. But I'm just looking at, I see all the, a lot of the data, which is great, and that's going to give us a piece. So you answered for me in the greater sense that, yes, it'll give us some things that we can talk about. But for me, kind of back to my colleagues, when are we going to have this conversation? I don't have the answer today, but I know we're going to get this report back in November. But being intentional about when, intentional about when we're going to have these conversations leading up to that particular point of the report, is that November, December? Or we're identifying some other time out there? But I think this is the year that we really need to do that, and I'm really going to continue to keep pushing for that. But thanks.
Thank you.
This is a question for Dr. Birdsong. If we, if we receive this report in November, December, what is the ideal kind of timeframe, timeline that you would envision to close or reconfigure a school and then make it, do the community engagement, and then open it for the fall of next year? What does that ideal timeframe look like for, from the, for the board?
Realistically, I don't think that Mr. Sturts could come back this year with a recommendation for us to implement in the fall.
Okay. So I, what would that, so the report would come November, December, we would discuss it. But then by next year, that would be something that we would be discussing. How much time do you need?
It sounds like from what he just presented, that he would be presenting you the information in 2024, the fall of 2024, and the recommendations around that. So it sounds like he needs a year to to study.
Oh.
And then come back with the.
I apologize for interrupting you. It's not 2024, it's 2023. We're looking at 20, it'll be November of '23. We're doing this, this, this report, not November of '24, my apologies.
Okay, which is different than what we talked about.
So, I, well, yes.
With the team.
What, what we.
Because we did ask that question.
And and my apologies, we are planning to do the, this study this fall.
That's what I'm thinking, that's what I'm assuming from your.
No, 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 just the study.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 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 just the study this fall. Implementing it.
Yeah.
Hundred percent agree.
Right.
That is a, a lengthy agree, yes. I was about to get one of those memos you talked about earlier.
We're going to appear on the personnel docket.
Yeah, now that, that, that's going to take a year plus of, I think, engagement. If if it's.
Okay.
It has to be.
I mean, I think, I think we have to have an understanding of the the type of planning that goes into the community engagement and the ideal timeframe that the superintendent and her staff need in order to close a building, reopen a building, and then do all of those things. Because that's going to be critical in our agenda planning.
Absolutely. It is, is really premature for us to talk that at this stage. Again, to keep in mind with sort of the overarching theme that we've had is every, in our master planning, is every decision needs to be a trade up for students.
Right.
That's, that's the anchor. And so we need to define, at this point, we're going to define what that is in best of our abilities.
Okay.
And then roll it out with a level of engagement we haven't seen in a while.
Exciting. Go ahead, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you. I want to first work from Mr. Clanton's comments. So when we, in the choice discussion, that is something that we looked at from the onset of ed planning. That's in part how we created the Academy for Discovery Lakewood. The other piece to that, I think that informally, in Norfolk Public Schools, we do have a choice system, and that's where you are seeing the live in and so forth. So in in reality, we have a system where often through our out-of-district transfer, we have choice that's taking place. And we provide, at a, at a much smaller level, we provide some options for staff to choose schools in in Norfolk. And then, third one. Folks' shoes addresses. So we have a, we have an informal, well, I know, so we have specialty programs that offer a choice within schools. So at the last meeting, we got a equity, we started discussing our equity audit, and that spoke to some of that. So I, I, I want to kind of offer support to what I think Mr. Clanton was saying is either we're doing it or we're not. Right now, I think it's kind of piecemeal.
Ah, okay.
So I, so I do think that's something that we need to have some conversations around, because school buildings are not placed equally around what we define neighborhoods or wards or sections of the city. And so when we're looking at attendance zones, then if we are establishing programs that, or have programs that we think are producing positive student outcomes, then how does a parent or a child opt into that opportunity while we're transitioning to the ideal of every school is a, is a choice school?
Sure.
So I do think there's something needs to be factored in. I want to go back to to something that I think we've definitely have talked about for the last five years, and I think has been a big difference between our phases. The steering committee of stakeholders. So I don't, I didn't see anything in the presentation that spoke to a cross section of Norfolk stakeholders who are providing input, are a sounding board, are helping to vet your work along with the recommendations that you bring to us. I think it, I think a couple of years ago, I thought you said you were going to, I thought I heard a promise that we would reengage and reinstitute that. I'm still not seeing it.
Yeah.
So, so, so I just want to put here.
Yeah.
That when we started the ed planning, there's a couple of reasons why we had that steering committee. One was to make sure that a cross section of the voices of the community were represented in the process. Because right now, I know you talk to us, so those of us on the school board, all of us are Norfolk residents. But in all your other conversations, I have no idea to what extent you're actually hearing from Norfolk residents. The, the stakeholder committee had a mix of, of a lot of residents, as well as business leaders, local elected officials and so forth. So I think that is critically important to this process.
And I will second that.
Okay, well, I don't see it in here.
Yeah.
And I don't see their role, I don't see their, in the timeline, where you bounce stuff off of them.
Right.
Even in the past, we had the co-chairs of the steering committee actually make the recommendations because it gave that added level of engagement. And frankly, it also, at least in theory, gave the board additional cover because, you know, sure, it's easy for us to come here and say we're going to close the school, it's very, or open the school. That's the other thing, I want to change the language, I don't want to speak from a deficit.
Deficit mindset, a hundred percent.
But so hearing from the stakeholders about creating a new exciting opportunity, like we did with ADL, I think carries an additional weight and buy-in than it does when it's just those of us that are kind of wonky about it.
Yep.
So I just want to, I want to put that there. I have a question. Also in the ed planning, initially, we had the goal of doing this enrollment and all these other decisions around the concept of all mobiles being eliminated. So in this, what you're showing us, does this have in there all mobiles being eliminated, or are you still looking at capacity with mobiles? So we, we were pretty clear about trying to get rid of all mobiles. So I think that that's something we need to make sure is still, is still there, because we didn't think that was optimal.
Yeah.
Get rid of the mobile trailers.
Okay, I don't know, just, just, just want to make.
No, that's, that's an excellent point. We will, I'm sorry, you go ahead, I'll, I'll comment when you're.
I mean, that, that was, oh, and the other thing is, I think we need to be clear, if you can go back to your slide, you had, I guess, slide 11? No, not slide 11, one of the ones you had, no, it's actually 19. Nope, that's not it either.
I'll just keep scrolling.
Hold on, give me a second, give me a second. There was one of the slides where it is 11. Slide 18. Okay, so on the left, you have, to what degree do the following impact student outcomes? And on the right, you have sources to define student outcomes. So if the, if we accept the definition of a student outcome being what students know and what they can do, then to me, many of the items that we have there around sources are inputs. So buildings, teachers, disciplining crime, attendance, those are potentially inputs. And so I just want to make sure in terms of language that we can have some level of consistency, because as Ms. Bassin was asking her question, or making her comments earlier. So we don't have, whether or not we have, I would argue, I'll say it that way. I think our discipline, our crime, our violence, those are for adults to solve. Our teacher retention certifications, those are for adults to to address. S O L annual pass rates can be an indicator of whether or not students are performing, like we talked about earlier today. How students are performing in higher level classes can be a student outcome. But as we saw in the last equity, on the equity audit we were having, we can make determinations whether or not we want to make sure that every school has access to higher level classes. And then how the students are performing there is, would be an outcome. So it just, it just caught my attention, because as we had this conversation, the earlier part of the meeting, about what we're trying to focus on and what we're measuring, I don't want to, I don't want to see it get muddled.
Yep.
Especially like we have a lot of pressure around chronic absenteeism. So to me, chronic absenteeism is an adult issue. Whether it's adults getting children to school, or whether it's adults within the system dragging children to school. And we have a policy that we were talking about that may deal with, you know, absenteeism, the policy may deal with what we do with with discipline. But I just wanted to to highlight that I think that we may want to take another look at how we're defining, make sure we're clear about what's a student outcome and what isn't.
That's fair.
And.
Yep.
But if you can go back to the promised delivery of the steering committee, I'd appreciate it.
I will start there and end with the last one, how's that?
Okay.
So what I can do the next time is, as, as Dr. Birdsong alluded to earlier, and I tripped over, we did present and discuss a longer term community engagement strategy. And the steering committee being reconstituted is at the core of that, along with some additions of having focus groups, additional community meetings in a, in a nice rhythm of all three stakeholder groups, your, your steering committee. Focus groups being those groups that, based upon the, the direction that the plan at, at the time of, that we're in in each phase, seems to be pointing to impacting communities, that those communities would be called out for specific focus groups based upon impact, and then meeting with the community at large. And then repeating that cycle, steering committee, focus groups, community, community at large, and that going over a period of time. I can share a preview of that when we come, and certainly by the time we do these results, show a sort of a draft sequence, scope sequence idea of that. But that is, that is in there, and that, we will keep that promise.
Excuse me, there was one other point I wanted to make that Ms. Bassin raised earlier. So your presentation that you gave us in March.
Yeah.
And I'm tying this into community engagement awareness. From my individual perspective, got weaponized.
I heard.
Because you, you gave us a presentation, and in essence, in the presentation, you said, you know, board, get your act together, and until you get your act together, there's nothing we can do. And so to me, we, we had a joint meeting of coun, with council, and I think that got weaponized. And so I think it is important that whatever direction that we're going through, if this is the presentation, then we need to make sure our stakeholders are aware of what we're doing. And, and that we, as part of the steering committee and part of the community engagement, that we invite our council members to support our community engagement efforts and, and, and all of that. So that while ultimately it's the school board's responsibility to make decisions, but I think if our, if our council wants to be supportive of us in this work, then I think there's an opportunity to make sure that some smaller version of this is presented and is, and is clear, so that the public is not confused and is coming to the school board and, you know, asking us what we're going to do. Going to city council, asking what we're going to do in the city council, or individual city council members say, well, go see your school board. I don't, I don't, I don't want to see it weaponized anymore. And so I think. And so, I think eliminating the weaponization comes with transparency and communication. And so, since you're giving us a presentation now that in part says, here's my plan, and I'm going to come back to you and then ask you all to take some action. I think that needs to be communicated as part of this overall process.
Happy to do it, makes sense. No, needs to be student-focused, I agree. So, the community engagement strategy, look at it with the amendment that you just mentioned about including city council. You talked about looking at the percent, you know, looking at capacity in mobiles as a factor and condition. Fair point, that's a great point. And so, I made that note, and we will do that. And you talked about clarifying outcomes as being student-focused, student-focused, per your earlier conversation. Less can be more, but make the main thing the main thing, as Dr. Birdsong said. So, we can do that. I'll, I'll tell you sort of the, the philosophy behind some of these outcomes. Is that when we're looking at this kind of study, what we want to look at is, student outcomes is at the center. And, and supporting that are indicators of teacher retention and teacher satisfaction and teacher support, which the FTEs fits into that, teacher retention fits into that. And then sort of the, the offerings to the child beyond the, the physical structure, and that's the course offering. So, you are right, those are supporting elements to the student outcomes, which are the, the dominant focus. Yes?
But to that, to that, I guess, one of, one of the, the, one of the aspects of that, though, is that in some instances, the offerings to the student are going to be confounded by the decisions that we have made. That's what I was trying to say, was a system, you know, is, is on us, right? Based on the specialty programs we have at our high schools, based on, you know, the choice programs that we have implemented, like ADL, for instance. You know, so, it's like, that has to, that has to play a role in your analysis. Because otherwise, if we're trying, if, if we're going to say that this worked here, you know what I mean? Like, if we're going to say this worked, we, we have to fully understand why it worked and be open and honest about why it worked there, right? And, and I think that also ties into what Mr. Clanton was getting at with the choice piece. Like, we, we do have to make a decision. I mean, some of this, we know the answer to this question, you know? We know the answer. The analysis just gives us the objective data to support the answers.
We have hypotheses.
Yes, we have hypotheses, very strong hypotheses.
Yeah, and what we want to see is, we want to see
Right.
exactly what the data says for you.
Right.
That's correct.
And it helps support whatever decision we make out in the community. It helps to support whatever, what that looks like.
I, I will, thank you for that caution. Because I will, I will work with Dr. Poll on, you know, when we do this, that particular analysis to see what's the genesis of these decisions.
Yeah, because each of our high schools and some of our middle schools have choice, have specialty programs within them. So, that is, you know, I think going to impact, it impacts offerings, it impacts attendance, because people, people come from across the city in some cases. And whether there are higher-level classes available in those schools, that is also a part of the factor. So, that, that all plays a role. So, I think that, that has to be acknowledged.
Ms. Bassin, I would offer to you that what you mentioned in the earlier part of the meeting, I still think that, and also with Mr. Clanton, I think those are decisions, those are constraints we can provide.
Yeah.
So, if we, if we saw in the equity report that some schools have higher-level offerings and other schools do not, then we can make the decision and say, as part of this process, we don't want to see that inequity exist.
Absolutely.
And then, and that then, to me, should then factor into the recommendation, not, not waiting for the report to tell us something that we already know.
Well, exact, well, exactly. And so, I mean, that's why I'm saying, we already know what it's going to tell us, right? And I, I guess, the, the question that keeps, and you, what you said in your presentation that keeps going through my mind, that, that you said, if I, if I heard it correctly, is, where did, we were talking, after we reviewed the goals earlier, when the board stated, you know, the five goals, you know? And you tied that into your presentation and said, where do we meet these goals in, in the port, where can we meet these goals in the portfolios, in the portfolio, right?
Yes.
Or where did we already meet these goals? And then, in that, and then how does this inform the ed planning process going forward? So, to me, I guess, it's like, we met these goals in certain areas in, in the portfolio because of decisions that we made in some instances, you know, that, that have impacted attendance, that have impacted the offerings, that have impacted, right? Those are decisions that we made. So, that's, I guess, that's what I was kind of ruminating over here, over. So, anyway, but you're right, those are constraints that we can place.
Right, and that's...
But we see that. But the equity piece, which we should be looking at everything through that lens, is just at the fore, you know, forefront of, should be at the forefront of our...
And I appreciate that, the presentation in the beginning, because that gives us some very specific targets that we can look at that percent of rate change, what rate change is needed for the, to meet the, the targets. Where have you met this rate change and what circumstance? And what can we learn from that?
And I'm sure you've worked with districts that have, you know, a combination of choice, charter, you know? All of it, you know, the whole gamut, but...
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I look forward to seeing you in November, December.
Absolutely.
For the holidays.
Yep.
Up next, we have the Tidewater Park Elementary School Transfer to the City. There's a resolution presented. Any questions about the resolution or comments? So, is everyone prepared to vote at our business meeting?
I have one, one question, not necessarily specific to that. But what, what have we decided about for an out-of-school? Is there an opportunity to provide that as well? Are we still thinking about whether or not there's some use for it?
There may be some use for that. We, we were kind of holding on to it, depending upon what the board decided, what direction you're going with some other things. And so, I would hate to turn that building over at this point without having any other direction from the board around other things you might decide to do.
I'm ready to support that. I just didn't know if there was an opportunity to do another.
Thank you, everyone. Up next, we have the School Board Policy Review. It's JGDZ, Student Suspension Expulsion. This is the second, second reading.
Correct.
Any comments or questions?
And just wanted to say, we also uploaded, there were, I believe, 22 community comments at this point. And then, before the actual vote, we'll upload other comments that we get, because we're still pushing that information out.
All right, thank you. And then, we have the School Crisis Plans.
Oh, wait, oh. Sorry.
Oh, you want to go back to the...
If you go back to the policy?
Policy? I don't know, we're always dragging you back here.
So, it, it's not so much the content of the policy, but it, it does impact the approval of the policy. And I, I, I guess, it's, it's my need for assurance, I think, is really driving, driving this, that we, if we approve this policy in two weeks, that we have to be ready in the weeks that follow to accept, you know, students that are, you know, who will be required to attend. And just the assurance that the, the building, the staffing, you know, everything, that we feel confident that, that that is in place to begin this transition this year in that, in that space, you know, that, that we're able to do that. I guess, is just really what I, I, I just need to hear that assurance again. Just because I know district-wise, you know, we have, district-wide, nationwide, you know, we have the issues that we are all having with teacher vacancies. But with that school in particular, with, with other needs, and making sure the interventions and the supports, you know, that everything, everything is in place to support our students, so...
And keep them safe.
Thank you, right, and keep them safe.
So, I've spoken with Dr. Kimzy and, and Dr. Birdsong as well. And we do have staff, staff in place, and we feel prepared.
Yeah, to, so, you feel prepared, like, if this policy is approved and implemented, that we can enforce it appropriately, okay?
At this time, we do. And, and I will add that, as you know, we've not always had good attendance in that program. And so, the teacher-student ratio, ratio was extremely low, as, as you know. And so, now, hopefully, our children will come when they're assigned to Go to Madison in our elementary alternative program. And so, we're, we're looking forward to that. Also, kind of as an aside, Mr. Phillips presented to you a resignation on the docket due to a confidential reason. And we also discussed the fact that that would also give us some time to perhaps revamp that job description if needed, depending upon how things roll out in the fall. So, that gives us a little more flexibility with support of that program.
Great, okay. All right, thank you.
My pleasure.
Okay. Finally, we have the School Crisis Plans review for vote on August 16th. Any questions or anything about that? All right, wonderful. Thank you all for a wonderful meeting this evening. I appreciate all your input and, and dedication to our schools and our students. With that, we'll be adjourned. Thank you.